All right, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I will now call our regular school board meeting for Independent School District Number 544 to order. And with that, clerk, will you please establish our quorum? Certainly. Kirby Anderson, Natalie Knuthson, Melanie Cole here. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Ms. Hermes present. Steven Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda which is before us. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the agenda is approved, we'll move on then for our reports. And this morning, we have our principals at the meeting for reports, starting with Scott Kolbeck, our Adams and McKinley principal for the elementary. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm confused, I'm not sure if I leave this thing on or take this mask off, but...
Take it off.
That's all right?
Yeah.
All right, good morning. It's a beautiful morning this morning. Fun to come to a 7:00 AM board meeting to start our week. Wanted to just give a little shout out to one of our staff members in our district, Dennis Wetzke. Every year, he plans a wonderful day for our kindergarten students. And last week, we had what's called Kindergarten Farm Day. Historically, that day has been held out at Red Horse Ranch. This year, it was held out at our fairgrounds. I had a chance to run out there. And we were able to send four kindergarten classes out there at a time. And they had four stations that the kids rotated through, about thirty minutes per station. Asking some staff, hey, what station is probably the favorite of the kids? Hands down, it's the animals. They had two goats, six sheep, a calf, a horse, rabbits, chickens, chicks. And all of the animals could be touched, petted, held, some of them. So you can imagine a class of twenty kids with all of those animals just being able to go from animal to animal at their own leisure for thirty minutes. They were in their glory. Another very popular station, probably a tie, was between the hayride and all of the large farm machinery. The kids were allowed to climb on this new, beautiful, sparkling farm machinery and climb up into the cab and climb on the big wheels. So they had a great time. The weather cooperated, so the hayride could be outside, a bit windy, but it wasn't raining. Rain was in the forecast, but it cooperated. And then there was a station where your food comes from. And so kids got to sit through that. So, but Dennis and our local chapter of FFA, a big thank you to them for that experience for our little kids. While I'm talking about kindergarten, this week, we have another exciting day coming up. And this is due to the work of Jamie Lil, our fia teacher at McKinley. She plans what we call Kindergarten Field Day. And we do this most every May. Kids rotate through stations. It's held outside. And this year, we're going to include our first graders, because last year, as kindergartners, they missed out on Field Day. I should clarify, we're going to include our first graders who are at McKinley School, the three sections of first grade there. So we're looking forward to that day at McKinley this week. Also, and we didn't think we would maybe be doing this yet this spring, but we are, we are going to send all of our kindergarten students to Otter Cove downtown. And that is partly due to the very successful fundraiser that we had this spring. I think I maybe talked about that a little bit at the previous board meeting in April. But we have a fundraiser that our PTO leads, and it's called Booster-Thon. And believe it or not, we have a new challenge on our hand. We have forty-eight thousand dollars to spend due to our fundraiser. And so a thank you to the Booster-Thon folks who come and spend a week in our district with our elementary kids. We had a wonderful day, a culminating activity out on our track doing the actual fun run. Mrs. Rund and I have been able to spend some time with our PTO president, Jenna Noland, and talk about some things that we're looking to do next year. One of those was Otter Cove for all kindergarten students. But then we thought, hey, let's do it this year. So our kindergarten kids this week, boy, quite a week for them. Otter Cove and the Field Day. So some things we're looking to bring back that we haven't had in our district for a while. Author visit. That author visit would touch all grades K through four. We're looking forward to that very much. Continuing to send our kindergartners to Otter Cove each year. Talking about sending our first graders over to the Lockpotten Zoo each spring. You know, a large cost in all of these efforts would be the busing piece. So with the fundraiser being so successful, we can cover the cost of all of that transportation. Mrs. Rund might talk a little bit more too about some things they might be looking to bring back for grades three and four. Then just want to touch briefly on Right Start. We're just right around the corner. Right Start is when we bring in next year's kindergartners to McKinley School to spend two days there. It's an hour and a half each day. That's going to be on June 9th and 10th. Special thank you to kindergarten teachers Kylie Miller and Jessica Colhays for stepping forward again to be the Right Start teachers. And then to paraprofessional Gail Rockle for being there to give support to any students who might need it. And then each spring, we... Oh, don't want to skip that one. Hey, we're bringing the Adams rain garden back to life. That's been ignored for a while. But if you drive by on Union, on the east side of the school, there is a rain garden on the south end of the building. And a special thank you to Molly Stoddard, who is a U.S. Fish and Wildlife employee who works closely with our Prairie Science class students in fourth and fifth grade. But we've been working together. And we took our first steps. And last week, there were some plants put in the ground in the garden. And we've put a second grade classroom to work to water those new plants. These are native plants to the area. And so this is going to be... It's the first step in what we hope will continue to be many steps. That's a very large rain garden, it's a very large area. So we did some work on the very south end of that. And then every spring, as you know, in grades K one and two, we do map testing. That went well this year. In the future, we started to do some map testing on Chromebooks instead of bringing kids into the lab. That was successful. We know that we're going to be doing that next year at Adams as we kind of lose our lab to add more space for other needs. But with all of our classrooms at Adams School next year having Chromebooks, we can handle map testing, we think, very efficiently. And then lastly, boy, I'd be remiss if I just didn't mention Mr. Monkey at this last meeting this morning. He hired me twenty years ago, thank you, Mr. Monkey. It was... It's been a privilege to work in this district. It's been a joy and a complete... It's just been wonderful to work with Mr. Monkey for all of these years. He mentored me for five years in this district. I was the middle school assistant principal. Worked right alongside him when this building was a middle school. My office was basically just right next door. And then quite honestly, I was kind of sad when I became the elementary principal because I didn't have my office next to Mr. Monkey anymore. But he has been a phone call away from me. And, you know, I'm going to miss Mr. Monkey in twenty-four years in this district. So certainly, you know, at some board meetings, after I give my report, I might kind of sneak out the door. But certainly today, I'm at least sticking around for Mr. Monkey's last report to the school board. And then I might sneak away when he's done. So thank you, Dean. Appreciate what you've done in our school district. And it's been great to be a part of the team that we're on together. I know that you'll be not very far away on East Mount Faith. So we know where you live. All right, so that's my report for this morning. And I can open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kolbeck. Next, we'll have a report from Kendy Rond, the elementary principal at Cleveland.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I too will just kind of echo what Mr. Kolbeck had to say about our OTTO PTO. They're an active group, and it's really, really neat to have their support and drumming up ways to find funds to support a lot of new additional learning activities for our students in the elementary schools. And they're excited to spend the funds that were generated. They're just kind of overwhelmed and amazed. And they're like, let's not keep it in the bank. Let's get this going and bring some things in for our students. So pretty exciting that the goal was twenty-three thousand dollars. And to more than double that was truly amazing. So great support from families and friends and neighbors for that. At the third and fourth grade level, a couple of years ago, you know, a couple of years ago, we had the Explorer Dome, which is a little mini planetarium available for third graders to experience as part of their study of the solar system. And we were able to set that up in the armory. And each class took a turn going down and having over an hour-long lesson in the Explorer Dome. So that was a big hit, and they're planning to bring that back for third and fourth grade students as part of that kind of a timely effort to go along with their study of the solar system next year. And then also, the Science Museum of Minnesota has some really good lessons that they bring right to the community that are very appropriate for all of the elementary grades too. So we're going to explore that and see what they have to offer this coming year. But those are a couple things that we're looking for the OTTO PTO support with. And then this coming Wednesday, the 26th, and on Tuesdays and Tuesday and Thursday of this week too at Adams and McKinley, OTTO PTO is hosting an ice cream social for all of the kids. So they're going to set up a fancy little ice cream stand outside of the building. And all of the kids will get to come through the ice cream stand and get a special treat from Dairyland and enjoy, hopefully, the weather cooperates, we can enjoy those treats out on the front, outside on the lawns at the school. So it's OTTO PTO's way of saying thank you for all the involvement to the students and staff and enjoy a special treat. And then also, I wanted to just acknowledge the wonderful support that we have with our business partners in town. Each of the elementary classrooms has an adopt-a-class... A business adopts a class. And it's really neat to have that partnership throughout the school year, that the schools have a connection with the business partners and then just that support. Many of the classes have an opportunity to go and tour the business that has adopted their class and worked with their class. And if not a tour, they've done some neat things virtually, kind of a virtual tour of a business or learning about the different entities in our community and how we're all part of a community and building those ties. So a big thank you to all of the business partners. Our community education office sets those up for each of the schools or each of the classrooms. So a big thank you to our community education office too for their work in making that happen. The month of May is always the month that just kind of flies by. It's action-packed and lots of fun and engaging things happening. Mr. Kolbeck mentioned some of those highlights for the kindergartners. Our fourth graders were fortunate enough to be able to go to Glendale for their annual spring field trip. They do some cross-curricular activities out at Glendale State Park for the day. And they had a beautiful, beautiful day for their day there this year. Some of the other classes have taken some local field trips. Mrs. Kraus had her class up at the state hospital grounds for a day last week. And they did a variety of different things and went all the way around the building. So they got their steps in that day. Today, we have a couple of classes. We need Ms. Hermes down at Lake Alice to learn about the cyclone that impacted our community many years ago. I'm going to join you for the morning session.
Okay.
And learn. And then our fourth grade orchestra had the first experience of performing in front of a live audience last Monday night. And that, they were excited for and went really, really well. Our Prairie Science classes were to have their celebration day this past Thursday. They were rained out, so it's rescheduled for this coming Thursday. But that's a special day where those students have spent the last few weeks writing an essay. And that essay reflects the highlights and their learning that they're going to take with them from over the course of the year. So each student is invited to have family members come and join them for that day. So we're in their outdoor classroom. And they have three stations set up. One in which they get to share their essay with their parents. Another station where they're going to get to plant a native plant that they've been growing in the greenhouse. And the third station, I'm not quite sure what that one was. But it's a special day. And all of those students have an opportunity to share their learning with their families. Typically, at this time of the year, our fourth graders take a tour of Kennedy Secondary School. This year, we're going to just postpone that. But there's a Right Start that's planned for those fourth grade students in August. So they will have that opportunity to come and become familiar with Kennedy and where they spend the majority of their time and practicing those locker combinations that are new to them and kind of the routine of the large lunchroom and some of those big things for those fourth grade students. And then also, usually at this time of year, we have our high school grade classes come to Cleveland for a morning of orientation activities. And rather than having that take place this year, they too had a virtual tour that was pushed out to them and shared with their classes, just kind of a little well, a spring welcome to Cleveland, and we're excited to meet you in the fall of the year. So fourth graders and second graders are... We're trying to help make that, bridge that transition and alleviate some of their anxiety, but create some excitement in those transitions for them. And then lastly, just kind of a shout out and encouragement to families to take advantage of the opportunities that our public library is offering to students over the course of the summer. They have books and book studies and story hour. They touch on all the different age groups and really, really encourage that growth with literacy over the course of the summer. So it's there. And we have a wonderful public library and lots of opportunities for families to take advantage over the summer months. With that, we're just going to hang on and enjoy the last week and a half of school. And good things are happening.
Any questions for Principal Rond?
Thank you.
I kind of feel like a little drum roll up there. Good morning, Mr. Monkey.
Hey, good morning, everybody. First of all, a very special thank you to our staff members here. Not only do they have to look to finish the school year here, but in anticipation of starting one next year, we have to hire a few people along the way. They've been so busy here over the course of this spring. Now we ask them to serve on interview teams. And so, but they just jump forward. And they want to be a part of that process. And they want to make sure that they hire outstanding colleagues for their teams or grade levels or whatever. So special thanks for that. We do have some openings here, just in relationship to some retirements that you folks have already addressed. We have Amy Beskey in science, who is retiring. Tammy Henderson, special ed. Janet Athens, night guard in elementary. And so we've looked to try to fill some of those positions. We're currently working on science and special ed. And we have a physical education opening also that we're working on this week. So fast and furious in trying to get new people here all squared away here for next year. High school graduation, right around the corner. As Mr. Lemke was mentioning here this morning, we got a little bit more clear guidance in relationship to what those ceremonies should look like. I thought this was the clearest that I've found yet this morning. So just to share with the group here, as the CDC updated masking requirements followed by Governor Walz's masking updates, many details seem unclear as to how events like graduation ceremonies are impacted. Clarify, many were looking for some good clarification this week. The short version is mask requirements only apply during the instructional day and while riding on school transportation. The requirements do not apply during after-school activities such as sports or other extracurriculars. For the events after May 28th, social distancing and capacity limits do not apply. So as I'm reading that, you know, we can come to graduation in relationship... If people want a mirror mask, they're more than welcome to do that. But the masking requirement, any type of socialist distancing or the capacity limits are not present for our graduation ceremony that will be looking to happen on Friday night, June 4th, 7 o'clock, KSS Gold Gymnasium. So obviously, we are extremely excited about that. And we're looking forward to it. The only pleasant, present problem that I have right now is we have way too many senior offering to speak at graduation, which is a pleasant, pleasant problem they have. I will just warn the participants ahead of time, there may be several of our seniors speaking at graduation, which is fun. Special thanks to Roy Anderson, Sean Anderson and his crew, our musical directors, Shane Tilke, Derek Abrams, Ryan Johnson, all of those folks for helping put together what we know is going to be a great graduation ceremony here on June 4th. And our partners with Park Region Otter Tel Telcom have been present every year in relationship to that. And they will be present again to put that on tape. I'm not sure if they're looking to do that live as of that evening. We would certainly take that if they would be willing to do that. But we know that they'll have it on tape and they'll continue to show it for most of the summer. So that's great. Also, our high school ALC graduation is scheduled for Thursday evening, June 3rd, at 7 o'clock. So the night before, that's for our ALC graduation. And that will take place in the auditorium here. And we're hoping for that range of about ten to twelve graduates out of there. We're also looking for somewhere in that thirty-five range out of IQ Academy. And we for sure will offer those individuals a chance to come here to Fergus Falls and walk across the stage as well if they'd like to participate. So looking forward to all of that. Looking off into the summer here a little bit, we have our middle school students that may need a little bit of catch-up time lined up for middle school summer school. That will be starting on June 7th and running for about four weeks in the mornings. And special thanks goes out each and every year to Gary Hopbeck for helping us run that program, along with Alana Johnson out of the counseling office. As far as other credit recovery for our high school students, we're looking to start that on June 9th. We're going to run about eight weeks this summer, taking a couple of weeks off around the 4th of July. So kind of a four and four-week kind of shift. And Kristin Tool has been doing some amazing work in relationship to putting that summer programming together. Recruitment of staff, figuring out schedules. Our counseling office has been talking to kids about showing up. And we really encourage anybody out there listening, if you get that notice in relationship to any type of summer opportunity connected with the school here, jump on board. Get your student here. We need to make some of those strides here yet this summer so we're ready for next fall. All of those programs are going to exist here at Kennedy. So a very nice environment with which to hold all that summer programming. We can cool the buildings down here. It will be a very good welcoming environment for all of those. Another shout out, we have a lot of equipment and materials that is out and about in the community. We know that our Chromebooks are out there for student use. We've also been very fortunate. The district has been very generous in offering some hotspots out there for families that may have a little bit more difficulty in relationship to internet service. We have close to forty-five of those out and about in the community. And we need all of these materials back. If you'll check our district website, we've been putting out notices for the schedule with which we would look to get those materials electronic. And we've got textbooks that are sitting out there that we need back. So please check that schedule. Find out when your son or daughter should be returning their materials. As an example, when we get the Chromebooks back, it's not that easy. We need the Chromebook, we need the sleeve that it came in, we need the charger, all to come back at once so we can have that ready to go. We're going to check them all over this summer and get ready to hand them right back out again come next fall. But we need everybody's help in relationship to getting that back so we can make sure that we've got those textbooks and materials ready to go next year and all of our electronic capabilities ready to go next year as well. Right Start programming, Mr. Kolbeck mentioned that this morning. For our incoming fifth graders, we like to do this closer to the start of the school year. So we have already penciled in the afternoons of August 18th and 19th to be able to invite those incoming fifth graders in here. We have three of our fifth grade teachers and one of our sixth grade teachers that will help with that program. And you'll get a real bright colored letter that'll come your way this summer and inviting you to register, then those incoming fifth graders to come here for Right Start over the course of two days. And finally, we have a last spring concert coming up tonight. There was an argument between did we do eleven or fourteen based upon how many different groups on different nights and split concerts and everything else that we had to do to be able to pull this off. But it was fantastic. We have our seventh and eighth grade choir concert here this evening. And then, well, I almost consider graduation to be a concert as well because of the music that we involve in that program. But last regularly scheduled concert here this evening. Come join us. As we read in here, capacity limits are off. So we'll take as many spectators as want to come here for tonight. And then finally, of course, thanks for everything. I think I have a few people here that have been very generous over the course of the last few weeks. Our other principals here at Kennedy, I mentioned before, provided the local fishing guide for me. I don't exactly know what that indicates, you know, whether I need all that help or it was just for fun. I think it's a lot of both. And I also have Mr. Kolbeck to thank for inviting me a few years ago to go up to Rainy River. So we're going to hopefully keep that going as a regular endeavor. I told him we need to go twice now. But usually, there's kind of three reasons why you would get invited to some activities like that. You know, it would be your friendship, your expertise, or your equipment. And I know maybe I qualify for two or three of those. I have zero expertise, but pretty good equipment and of course, a great friend to go with. And then I think I have Mr. Steinbrenner and maybe Mr. Thorsted to thank or worry about here over the course of the last few weeks. I think they put out a notice that said I would be acceptable to the idea of getting Rapala lures as a chance to go as a little party gift around here. Well, I ran out of tackle box room for sure. I don't know what number we're at now. But it has been very generous. And I had to laugh the other day because I did happen to get the one Rapala lure that is absolutely 100% guaranteed to be successful each and every time that you go out. Now, the fishermen in the room are going, that's not possible, not possible. But this particular Rapala lure is fairly long and it doesn't have any hooks on it, and it's got a bottle opener on the end. That recipe lure will be successful. That recipe lure will be successful. So I think I have Mrs. Jacqueline S. Ludwig to thank for that one right there. Anyway, it has been a blast and I look forward to a great graduation. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, question?
Just a common sense, you're not going to go out of here yet, just on behalf of the Board for just publicly wise, just thank you for your leadership. I think one thing that Mr. Monkey does is deflect praise. He does a good job of giving it to staff, but I know through, throughout the challenges of the, you know, the school has had the challenges with budgets and stuff like that. You don't just move buildings during construction, move out of here, go over to the high school and back to high school without great leadership, and that's because of you. And I know there's lots of people that help with many hands, but at the same time, there's still somebody that's there to, that kicks in and serves and serves his staff. And one of the things that Mr. Monkey has definitely done is advocated for his staff and students at KSS and at the high school and middle school wherever he's been in leadership, and I appreciate that very much, so we're going to miss you and thank you for your great leadership.
Thanks much.
And now we will have our reports from Superintendent.
Good morning. These principal reports are tough X to follow today on this beautiful morning. And I'm a morning person, so I love this 7:00 AM start time, so. First of all, just thank you to everyone in the organization, our staff, really rolling up their sleeves and heading into this very challenging year with a can-do attitude and flexibility and creativity and strong work ethic. It's been challenging, it's been unprecedented, but I'm very proud of the work that's been done in the district over the course of the last 12 months, so much appreciation to everyone for their involvement. I want to also just call out the work of our students in our music department for the wonderful concerts that we've had over the last few weeks. It's been nice to see live performances once again. I think every single director had remarked at the opening of the concerts, the number of days since they had performed in front of a live audience, and it had been considerable. But wonderful to see the staff enjoying the music that's been produced. I also want to especially recognize the support of the Board this year and your leadership to the district, and also the support that we receive from the 544 Education Foundation and the Dollars for Scholars group as well. Both of these committees are very, very active in working on behalf of our students, and whether it's through scholarships or support in the classroom, really augment the fine work that's being done on a day-to-day basis. Mr. Monkey mentioned personnel, so we are still trying to fill some positions. We are especially in need of applicants with a special ed background, so those folks out there as listeners, if you have a friend, colleague, relative that has a special ed background, we really would appreciate your interest in spreading the openings that we have. And then we've also had posting on the mechanical side now for a couple of months that we are still looking to fill. We have a general mechanical position open, and then we also have a mechanical supervisor position, which we would hope to have someone with a chief spoilers license apply for. So again, for the listeners, if you know people that would like to come live in a great community, work for a strong district, we have some opportunities available. We had an opportunity, Ottertail County, to host the Governor's Fishing Opener, and I think the Governor caught a single perch, which is somewhat being blamed on his guide, which is Superintendent from Bertha Hewitt, but that may be unfair. But the Governor was called away kind of abruptly on Sunday morning, and we thought, well, what's going on? He should have enjoyed the beautiful area a little bit longer. And as it turned out, the legislators, the House and Senate, had somewhat surprisingly reached budget target, and so that's why he was kind of called out on rather short notice. So we have in principle legislative agreement in place. It's $525 million of new spending for E-12 over the next two years, and I consider that number to be quite favorable to public education. There's always a lot of advocacy that goes on with the legislative sessions. The ask was 750 million to receive 525 million, I think is going to be very healthy for us. Now, the legislative session moves into what they call conference committees, and so these have much different rules to them, but they are supposed to have on May 28th their spending and their budget bills allocated, and June 4th, they need to agree on policy items. So there will be a special session that comes up just to dot Is and cross Ts, but all in all, very favorable on the financial side. And then what I'm told is likely minimal impact on the policy side, which is also very, very important. Mr. Monkey covered summer school, but we have multiple opportunities for kids to come and receive augmentation of some skills if they're running a little bit behind, credit recovery. Then we have otter adventures for students to just again, receive some instruction and more of an experiential learning process over the summer. I do want to congratulate our seniors, whether it's been recently watching them cross the stage for scholarships, watching them perform. It's a very, very talented group of young men and women that will be crossing the stage on June 3rd and June 4th for their diplomas, and my hats off to them, we're very, very proud. Wonderful news on the lifting of the capacity of mask limits, and I think that I speak for everyone in the organization and community that we are very much looking forward to a normal, quote-unquote, "normal" school year next fall. On the facility side, we are working with three different companies on some quotes for some facility assessments, primarily with McKinley, Adams, and Roosevelt, so that will be coming up in the near future. Our COVID numbers were down, and so were the 14-day case counts in Ottertail County. From 514 to 520, we only had one positive ID between staff and students. That brings us up to 180 for the year, or 6% of our staff and students. And the two-week case numbers dropped to 29.14, so that's heading in the right direction. And then with my weekly COVID report, we also included a notice from Ottertail County Public Health with the vaccines and a registration process for that now that they have come down to 12 years and up. So we're looking forward to a number of our students being vaccinated over the summer in anticipation for a normal start next fall. And then we also will have several recognition pieces going on. We will have, we'll honor Scott Cumberall as the Fergus Falls ISD 544 Teacher of the Year, that's coming up on Wednesday. We'll do our Years of Service recognition, and then we'll honor our Support Staff of the Year at that recognition ceremony as well. And each of the buildings has kind of done their own independent plans on how they're going to recognize the retirees from that specific building. But with that said, my thanks to Dean and his partnership. It's been a pleasure working with you, Dean. Thank you for your leadership. We certainly wish you the best. You've left a legacy here that's going to be cherished for years to come, so my appreciation, I have greatly enjoyed working with you. And with that, I will turn it over to field any questions that you may have.
Seeing none, hearing nothing, we'll keep looking forward. Thank you, Superintendent. The next agenda item is our general consent items, and for consideration, our minutes from May 10th, our last regular Board meeting. We have several personnel moves to consider approval. Certified staff retirements, Amy Beskey, science teacher at Kennedy, effective at the end of the school year. Susan Moore, elementary teacher at Adams, effective at the end of the school year. And Catherine DeeDee Carpenter, kindergarten teacher at McKinley, effective at the end of the school year. We have two support staff hires, Nathan Waddle, seasonal groundskeeper, mechanical worker, hire in the beginning of June, and then to hire Catherine DeeDee Carpenter as a title one here professional at McKinley for our next school year. So would someone offer a motion to approve those general consent items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, those are approved. And we have new business that begins with the first reading of the fiscal year '22 financial budget for the public schools, and we'll have our business manager review that for us.
All right, good morning. Starting with the general fund, Fund One, we are estimating a total revenue of $35.35 million and total expenditures of a roughly $35.6 for a budget deficit spend of $250,000. With our budget reduction plan, we see some retirement savings of $88,700, and we also had some teacher position reductions of $174,920 for a total reduction package of $255,620, which leaves us with an actual surplus budget of $5,620, which would increase our fund balance by that amount. Some notables, starting with the expenditure side, we do have new curriculum budget dollars that ended up at $350,000 for the science curriculum this year, and we also budgeted social and emotional learning curriculum additional of $25,000. Those may fluctuate and change, but they should be set at about those numbers. We did budget $275,000 for technology this year that'll help with Chromebook purchases for our one-to-one and also for some needed staff computer replacements across the district. We hired a gifted and talented teacher, which we estimated at $70,000. We also budgeted some notables from capital projects for the ALC bathrooms at $100,000, and also we're doing some, so we're spursing up of the Roosevelt Gym, which would estimate around that $50,000 range. On the revenue side, just going right to the enrollment assumptions, we're estimating 185 kindergarten students coming in, that's roughly a recapture rate of 55% from the loss due to COVID-19. And in addition, a new line item this year would be our lease revenue from Children's Corner. The just base rent will be $180,000 for the year, and they will also pay a prorated around 20% number of utilities, which we estimate at $100,000, which would make it at 20, so total $200,000 from Children's Corner rental revenue that'll be coming in. For Fund Two, I have budgeted a base, a balanced budget. Fund Two is kind of tricky because next year we will see free meals throughout the full year for FY '22, so there will be a lot of federal dollars and a shift from lunch income, so we will, it'll be a different, it'll be interesting to see what happens going into FY '23 on how we're going to approach the Food Service Fund. So right now, as of right now, we're expecting a balanced budget. Fund Four, we will see a total revenue expenditures of $940,800, or I'm sorry, revenues of $940,800 and total expenditures of $949,100, roughly about $8,300 deficit spend. This year was, it's typically Mary Madison and company, we budget very conservatively, and we end up on the better end of things. But we also saw some changes to our early childhood program that saw some staff hour increases, which can increase on the expenditure side, which you wouldn't normally see. For Fund Seven, I'm sorry, for Fund Six, we won't have any building construction this year, so that was zeros across the board. Fund Seven, we did see, we will see a budget deficit of $334,000, that's because we have reserves that we will be, that will help pay our debt this year. And that was talked about when I, we went through the truth and taxation hearing, we're going to see some credits given to the community in that case. And then, and then Fund Eight is our custodial fund, which is like scholarships and what have you, and we normally have a balanced budget there as well. With that, I will take any questions.
Nice summary.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The review of our fiscal year '22 budget doesn't require action today, it's just simple for review, and we'll have upcoming motion on that in the next Board meeting.
Can I just make one comment to the general public?
Yes.
Just for the Fall. If there's one thing I can ask parents to do is to please fill out the free and reduce forms. That does not, I know people sometimes associate that just directly with our lunch program, but a tremendous amount of our funding is tied to balance numbers of who is free and who is reduced, and it's just important that we get an accurate count. We're not asking people, I mean, as a Board member, it's not something that we look at at all or even know about of who and who is not, so it's not something, it's a personal item, and so we don't, but the federal government does, and the state government does look at those numbers in the community, and our funding is directly impacted by it. And so, and it allows us again to provide services to all students, and again, I just want to make sure our community does not miss out because our numbers do not reflect our actual numbers of what our community gives, so.
If it was more accurately titled, "An estimation of community income level for federal and state funding," then we might get it a little bit. The connection between free lunch and a gauge on the poverty levels or income levels of the community is an abstract concept, but very good point to make, Matt, that that is a way that, that's the way it's measured, and that's how we benefit as a community for our education system, so. All right, and perhaps we could put that in a public service announcement, but I've been on the radio a few times, because it's good information. All right, we'll move on to look for a motion for the extended school year services and summer school for special education services. We do this annually, provide services for this class of students. So moved. And a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I will entertain a motion for the fiscal '22 year school district membership agreement with Lakes Country Service Cooperative. Would someone offer that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right. The next item on our new business is looking for a motion to accept bids for long-term disability and life insurance from Madison National Life, this will be effective for the '21, '22, and '22, '23 school years. This is an employee benefit. Fair motion to accept those bids. So moved. And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that?
I can, I can sit out this vote since we have a quorum without me, because it's conflicting interest, I think.
All right.
Right? Yeah, we have four, so I have to sit out of this vote.
Okay. So your recusal noted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is accepted. Looking for approval for the Right Start summer programs for kindergarten, which is in June, and for fifth grade, which is in August for this year. in June, and for fifth grade, which is in August for this year. Someone make that motion?
Me, Miss Hermes.
All right. So moved. Thank you. And is there a second?
Me and Steve Vegasah.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved, and looking for approval on land lease agreement between our school district and John Roll, effective May 15th of this year through November 30th this year. Would someone offer that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved, and then we'll move to two resolutions to conclude our new business. The first is a resolution on the retirement of Amy Beskey, and whereas Amy Beskey began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in January 1983, whereas Amy's been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 36 and a half years, and whereas Amy has done an excellent job as a science teacher for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Amy Beskey for her 36 and a half years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. All offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the resolution?
I just want to say as a teacher, there's no one that gets more excited about talking about rocks than Amy Beskey does. Your students are like that, so.
All right. Clerk?
Natalie Knutson? Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Vegasah?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have a resolution on the retirement of Susan Moore, whereas Susan Moore began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in June 1987, whereas Susan's been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 34 years, and whereas Susan has done an excellent job as an elementary teacher for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Susan Moore for her 34 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I will.
All right. Missy Hermes makes that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right, clerk, please take the vote. Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Vegasah?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. Thank you to those retiring staff, and thanks to the board. This concludes our meeting today, other than the work session where we will discuss a couple of topics. We'll meet again Monday, June 14th, 7:00 AM here in the Otter Community Room. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the adjournment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the meeting is adjourned.